I'd like to call to order the reasonable city council meeting for Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. First item on the agenda will be invocation by Minister Rosetta Bageet, a police department chaplain and Associate Minister of Jerusalem Holiness Church, 633 Prince Street, Reesville, North Carolina. Reverend Bageet, as you pray, would you please pray for our veterans?
I'm thankful that you mentioned that because I would love for you to know that my pastor is Bishop Mary Jackson, not me. Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening to say thank you. When you think about it, Lord God, there are so many things that we have to be thankful for. There are other things, Lord God, that we are so very much concerned about. But when it all comes down to one thing, you are in control. And I'm so grateful for that because things come our way, Lord God, that's out of our control and we have to lean on you and depend on you for your wisdom and your understanding. Now, Father, I pray for this council that you will continue to instill in them what's needed for this city. They're marvelous people, every one of them. I believe in every one of them. And I just thank you, Lord God, that we have the opportunity to have good people working for us. It's a blessing. Our veterans, Lord God, we pray for them. Lord God, all situations, health-wise, otherwise, Lord God, we pray that you will bless them, be with them, take care of them. Our Reverend local families, Lord God, we ask your blessings upon our families. We thank you, precious God, for all things because you're in control of all things. And as I always say, all that we need is in you, Christ Jesus. Bless us and take us through this meeting. Have your way in this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. We have four items. Is there anyone who'd like to have one removed for discussion? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion? So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. As you can see, we have two council members on line tonight. Next item is a public hearing, consideration of amendment to Chapter 9, Health and Sanitation, Article 2, nuisances, Section 9 through 20 and 9 through 22 of the city's Code of Ordinances. Enclosure 1, Jason Harden, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor, Council and City Manager. Good evening. As you know, we've received concerns on natural landscaping areas around the city regarding their appearance and encroachment onto neighboring properties over the past year roughly. In response to these concerns, staff investigated how other local governments in the triad or region regulate natural landscaping areas. This proposed amendment to the reasonable city code of ordinances, Chapter 9, Health and Sanitation, Article 2, nuisances, Section 9 dash 20 and 9 dash 22 addresses this issue along with a few other changes. The proposed changes to the code are intended to address other concerns we've received along the way and to bear clarify our standards regarding nuisance abatement. All of my research pointed to requiring borders for natural landscaping areas that but develop property. Several methods that can be used as a buffer to make it meet the standard. There's a list of the typical ones in the code ordinance that which you have in your packets that would most commonly be deemed a buffer. Note, this does not include trees. This is specifically for low vegetation, not tree encroachment because getting into trees leads to safety issues, like if you cut it the wrong way, it falls, and you trim it the wrong time of the year, you could end up causing hazards. We don't recommend getting into trees and tree encroachment. So this is specifically for vegetation. Also included in these changes are provisions for nuisance abatement if vines and shrubbery and overgrowth become a breeding ground for rats and snakes, basically becoming overgrowth out of control. We've commonly seen this occur where vacant houses would kind of be just abandoned, but they maintain the turf grass, but they leave the shrubbery and it kind of overtakes the house. So that's the intent behind that. Also, the current, oh, excuse me, nuisances, including open collection of garbage, food waste, animal waste, is now specified as within the public view, including porches and carports. So previously, we've interpreted it as open collection, meaning that it's in the yard. This change would make it to where it's within the public view. So if there's trash, it would need to be screened somehow out of the public view, including anything that causes a noxious smell or something like that. So that's what that changes. Also, subsection 8 is proposed to be repealed. This is kind of an interesting catch-all, which me and I asked Bill about it, and we both legally, we both think that this is a little vague and it kind of puts the earnest on council to prove why there is a nuisance. So it's contingent on a public hearing, which I haven't been able to find anyone else who does that. So I don't think it's been employed since I've been here way further back. So we propose to repeal that and just make sure that the specific standards are listed for what we define as a nuisance. So finally, there's a chronic violators provision that's added for those who have at least three violations of 9 dash 20 in a calendar year. Chronic violators will receive a letter stating that no further notice shall be given for violations of 9 dash 20, and the new calendar year and any nuisance will be abated with a lien being placed on the property. So that means as soon as we hit the first of the year, as in the previous calendar year, there were three violations or more, there would be no further notice and we would just turn it to the contractor when there was a violation to abate it. This is authorized by the North Carolina Journal Statute 168 dash 200.1. The state statute specifically gives local governments authority to do chronic violator provisions, which we basically just kind of copy and paste the standards from the statute into the code. So it's point blank in the state statute. And staff recommends that the proposed code amendment be approved. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Jason?
Mayor and Council, if I may, Mr. Harden, do you care just to maybe briefly speak about how this kind of got brought to our attention? I know you and your department had visited several of the community watch meetings, and I know this seemed to be a reoccurring concern of those citizens at the community watch meetings.
Sure. At the community watch meetings, they did bring this to our attention with a particular property, but had others along the way. That one's probably just the one that's gotten the most notoriety. But basically, yeah, I mean, we kind of, we saw the concern, so we put that into this amendment along with the other things that we've seen kind of along the way. So that's the purpose of the amendment.
Is it a monetary fine included in it, or is it just you refer back to the lien?
That would be for the lien. So there is a $100 administration fee anytime there is a nuisance that's abated. But the cost of abating the nuisance is put as a lien on the tax record, but the only fee is the $100 administration fee.
And that comes after the habitual?
That comes when the contract is turned over to the contractor to be abated.
Okay, okay.
So if they cut it before then or whenever, it's only assessed if we abate the nuisance.
How long does it take before you have an independent contractor come clean it up?
Uh, to have the code in front of you.
I know you said you had the three, talking about the three violations for the repeat offender.
Yeah.
And you was talking about resetting it the first of the year. Is this something like you get it and then 30 days, but follow it like a 90-day period?
Are you saying like from a specific violation, from the time we send the letter, to how much time they have to cut it?
Yeah, before you get somebody to clean it up, how long do you wait from the time you send it before you would send somebody in to clean it up?
So we send the letter, I believe it's seven days. I had to check myself on that, but I think it's roughly seven days to abate the nuisance, like with high grass. So we send them a letter if they have a period of time to cut it, and if they haven't cut it, code enforcement will go back, do a double check. If it has not been cut, then it's turned over to the contractor.
Does it look like two in there? I seen it talked about the appliances and all that other stuff. The reason why I'm asking, I had a similar situation like this in a jurisdiction that took about six months to handle it, and I thought was an extremely long time.
No, there's not six months, definitely. I think from the notice, I think what's in my head is seven days. It might be different. I'll double check that for you.
No, I'm just curious. Well, I was just wondering if we had a timeframe laid out where we didn't, were able to implement and follow through and then follow through, you know? Just curious.
So after three of those, then the chronic violator provision was going to affect the next calendar year, where we would send them a notice saying, you know, for the remainder of the year, you wouldn't get another notice. We just turn it over to the contractor.
Does that reset after that fall? So they get that year, then you just turn it over? Do they come back out of that following year and then start all over?
Yes. So if they get turned over, if they're a chronic violator one year, and then the next year there's no violations, then they're not a chronic violator anymore for the next calendar year.
No question?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Harden, do I understand that it is $100 fine and cost for each violation are only after the third one?
No, ma'am, that's $100 per violation. So that's if we abate the nuisance, there's a $100 administration charge that goes on top of it. So that's per violation.
Great, thank you.
What about the cost for the cleanup? Is it 100 plus that cost?
Yes, it's 100 plus the cost of the cleanup.
Mr. Harden, would you? Get out of the questions. Okay, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
The public hearing will start at 6:13. Do we have anyone who'd like to speak for the ordinance amendment? Seeing no one, is there anyone who'd like to speak against the ordinance amendment? Seeing no one. Public hearing will close at 6:13 and 43 seconds. What is the council's decision on this? Do we have a motion?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Mr. Uffus?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Oops, let me go cut now.
Does she have a question? Okay, next item on the agenda, consideration of additional improvements at Lake Reesville enclosure 2, Chris Phillips, Assistant City Manager of Administration, Finance Director, and Josh Beck, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager. Just got a brief note here, and then Mr. Beck has the details if you all would like to discuss it further. Although we fortunate, along with every other city in the United States, the American Rescue Plan dollars directly from the federal government, that has to be obligated by the end of this calendar year. So by the end of next month, we have to obligate. We have spent most of our funds on a variety of different projects, but we do have a few dollars. And last month, you've all allocated some of those to Lake Reesville. And at that time, at the council meeting and in other discussions as well, some ideas came up about some other things. Maybe even the improvements that were approved last month could have been taken a little further. So we have, over last month, provided more information, and as Josh can go over that, to use or to need more funding for improvements. So thought the idea is let's use the rest of the American Rescue Plan funds. There's no better place than Lake Reesville to see those dollars go to make improvements that everybody can enjoy. And also, you know, can't underestimate the tourism piece of Lake Reesville for our city and county as well. So to be exact, there is right now $390,022.45 left in American Rescue Plan funds that we are going to obligate to Lake Reesville improvements. Josh's memo actually has a budget of $181, so it leaves another $209 to be used for, I think we've mentioned some other possible improvements. And of course, the $181 and the $131 from last month are both budgeted numbers, so it will be good to have a little bit of a cushion to see if we can get everything done. But tonight, there in your packet, what you're being asked to do is approve a special revenue project fund amendment that moves the $390 from the ARPA fund to the Parks and Rec Fund. And then you're going to also do a budget ordinance amendment, which will recognize the $390 in the Parks and Rec Fund as a revenue, and then it will allocate it to be spent on capital improvements at Lake Reesville. So those are the two budget items you're going to be asked to do. Josh is here because he has more details of the $181, the $390. If you all want to, you know, have a touch with that, or else let Josh touch on what's included.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. As Chris mentioned, you know, we presented quite a list of improvements at the last city council meeting, but following some subsequent meetings on site, and I know you guys had some chats while I was out last week, you know, we were asked to kind of, which I think is a great thing, but to continue those improvements further. You know, there was a lot of ideas thrown out. And so what we decided, at least in, I guess, this initial stage, what we could do, so we brought the street crew in, we've got some estimates on concreting all the pads. If you remember, the initial proposal that I presented was just looking at doing two of the pads to meet the ADA compliance. But as Councilmember Martin and I discussed in council last time, you know, making them all concrete allows the opportunity for you guys to decide later to raise those rates if you're interested in doing that, because that is an added amenity to each of those sites. But it comes at a cost, and so we got estimates around $155,000 to do that throughout all 47 sites, as well as that'll obviously adjust our timeline of getting that done because that's additional work per site. And then also brought our water and sewer staff in, and we determined that utilizing the existing pump station, we could tie in an additional five or six campsites if we made a great adjustment on one of them. And then that would add additional amenities. And again, sometimes water, when you can provide both water sewer and not just water and power, that can allow for some rate changes if that's something y'all are interested in. Well, that's obviously another perk. And so that's a pretty easy fix. We got cost estimates on that that came in just under $4,000 for materials, $39 and some change. And again, our staff can do that in-house and run that. And then given honestly, the vast amount of work we're doing, we wanted to add a little bit of contingency, and then all this is private utilities. So we're working with getting some private utility locates because obviously we don't want to disrupt the power that's there, water source there, so we need to make sure all that's marked and located correctly. As Chris mentioned, beyond that, there is a substantial amount of money. I believe a sketch was provided to you guys during your two-on-twos that I kind of looked at. And to be honest with you, it's not a new idea when you look at the original construction drawings of the campground. This particular area where I'm indicating as an expansion area is actually denoted on those plans. So I'm certainly not going to take credit for that. That was done many years ago, but I do think this gives an opportunity. We could look at some feasibility studies and other things with the excess money and look to do a site there. Maybe that's cabins, maybe it's additional campsites. We can certainly have those discussions with a design firm, as well as the possible, you know, there's a lot of land out there, but it's, you know, it's quite hilly, it's quite rough. And so we looked at the possibility of adding some of the recreational amenities that were discussed adjacent to the large parking lot. I call it the overflow parking lot that's there. One, that gives you the ability to park there, there's a shelter close by, and even if we did this expansion, I think it's a central location for those amenities for both the new potential loop as well as the old loop or existing loop that's there now, and could be walkable from both and kind of again centralized to that area with the jump pillow that's recently been constructed. And again, there's a shelter there, so even if you're not staying, maybe you want to rent the shelter for the day, you have the parking lot, and the kids, maybe while having a birthday party, could run down and play on some of those amenities. So I think through the funds that you guys hopefully allocate, we can accomplish some of the extra things you want. Unfortunately, we were not able to accomplish everything we wanted at this time. We did meet with a soil scientist and discuss some of the possibilities of adding septic to the other systems. I think that's pretty cost prohibitive based on the buffer requirements of the lake. Obviously, water quality of the lake is very important. That's our drinking water here, so we don't want to jeopardize that. But he did present some ideas to us that we can explore in the future if that's something we are set on. But again, adding a few additional sites is a win for honestly, a few thousand dollars, pretty reasonable price on that. And again, we can move forward from here with some studies and designs if that's the pleasure of council. But I'll be glad to answer any additional questions. I apologize, I was out last week. I know y'all met, but I'll be glad to answer maybe any questions you had then or have since then.
This is going to be very exciting for Reesville. Our diamond in the rough is going to start shining. So anyone have any questions or comments?
Because I know we've met and went out there and walked around, did a lot of discussions and stuff, and it falls back. Us sitting up here as council and listen to the citizens and listen to the visitors that are coming here and utilizing our facility and listening to what the issues were and getting on it as quick as we have, I mean, I think it speaks a lot. And then two, where we can stretch the money by being able to do things in-house, a lot of people don't understand how important that is and how lucky we are as a city that we have talented employees that can do that. But I guess we're still on plans with the paving too throughout all that.
Yes, sir.
You may have mentioned that, but that, you know, that speaks a lot too, is camping out there. That was one of the complaints that came to me when I was talking to campers, you know, the dust is stirred up and things like that. So but I really appreciate y'all's work on it and the faculty going out there and putting eyes on it and jumping on it. It's really going to be, it's just the beginning of the changes out there.
That's true. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh.
All right, we have two motions to make. Grant, special revenue ordinance amendment, American Rescue Plan.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. And last but not least, budget ordinance amendment number six. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Next item on the agenda, consideration of adoption of state holiday schedule for 2025 enclosure 3, City Manager, some or more. I'm getting used to more.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So what you have before you tonight is the City of Reesville follows the North Carolina State Holiday Schedule. In your packet, you'll see the holiday schedule for 2025. I've attached a copy of the North Carolina Holiday Schedule. All employees are also granted one personal holiday annually. The personal holiday must be scheduled on a date that is mutually agreed upon by the supervisor and the employee. All newly hired employees will be granted one personal day in their first year of employment, regardless of their employment date. Also, this budget year, we started out the same, all employees were granted one floating holiday for 2024. The holiday must be used prior to the December 31st, 2024, which employees were made aware of that. The floating holiday does not carry over in 2025, and employees must have their supervisor's approval for using the holiday before the day is taken off. The state holiday schedule is as follows. Where city hall offices will be closed, Wednesday, January 1st, for New Year's Day; Monday, January 20th, for Martin Luther King Jr. Day; Friday, April 18th, for Good Friday; Monday, May 26th, for Memorial Day; Friday, July 4th, for Independence Day; Monday, September 1st, for Labor Day; Tuesday, November 11th, for Veterans Day; Thursday and Friday, November 27th and 28th, for Thanksgiving; and Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, December 24th, 25th and 26th, for Christmas. So this is the proposed 2025 holiday schedule.
Does anyone have any questions concerning the proposed holiday schedule for 2025? All right, we have a motion for approval.
Motion.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Is there anyone who'd like to come before council tonight? Seeing no movement, City Managers report.
Thank you, Your Gorman Council. So just a couple updates. The first item I have in my report is the National League of Cities Conference City Summit is Wednesday, November 13th through Saturday, November 16th in Tampa, Florida. And we would ask, I believe we've spoken to Councilmember Hairston, if we could have a delegate approved for the conference. He would be voting on Saturday, November 16th.
Do we have a motion from council to appoint? Do we have a motion from council to appoint Councilmember Hairston as a delegate? We have a motion?
Second.
What, hair, hair got it?
And second, by Mayor Proten. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you always volunteering to do that for this Councilmember Hairston.
Glad to do it.
Just a few more updates. I really want to appreciate Montana Brown, our new Director of Marketing and Economic Development for setting us up some facility tours of our industrial clients. Our next tour is with Unifi, and it's Thursday, December the 12th from at 3:00 PM. So if you'd like to attend, please let us know. A couple of announcements for our Employee Relations Committee. We did host the annual Employee Halloween Stew on October 31st at 11:00 to 1:30 at the Greenhouse. I just want to thank all the management team, all the members of Montana's team that went above and beyond, and all the employees that came out and celebrated that. So we really appreciate that. At this event, we did hold two small Battle of the Cups. We had a tie for first place in our costume contest, and first place went to Public Works and the Police Department. So congratulations. Second event was a pumpkin decorating contest, and the winner was the Fire Department. So congratulations on that. The next Battle of the Cup is November the 21st from 2:30 to 4:30. And this event will feature basketball, best pie, and a lip sync battle. So please mark your calendars to come out. And then also, please mark your calendars, the annual Employee Holiday Luncheon is Tuesday, December the 3rd from 11:30 to 1:30 at the Carriage House. Lunch will be served at 11:30, and we will play bingo. And we will also announce the winners of our teamwork award and our above and beyond customer service award. A couple of personnel updates. I do want to give a shout out to Captain Brian Oakley, who retired the end of October. Captain Oakley worked for Reesville Police Department for 30 years. Captain Oakley started with us on September 21st, 1998. Prior to that, he worked three years with the Stokes County Sheriff's Office, promoted to Sergeant in 2004. He was assigned to community policing, then promoted to Lieutenant in 2006. He was assigned to the Patrol Division before being transferred to the Narcotics Division in 2001, and then to Admin Lieutenant position in 2012, promoted to Captain in 2014, and he was assigned to the Investigation Division before taking, before being transferred to the Patrol Division in 2016, then returning back to the Investigations Division in 2019. So if you see Captain Oakley, please tell him thank you for his dedicated years of service to the City of Reesville. We have also, the city's filled the additional building inspectors, inspectors position. Mr. Jonathan Lopez is serving in this role. And then the city also filled the vacant position of our HR analysis. Ms. Sherry Hancock is serving in this role. And then I would like to give a special thank you to Officer Tommy Boone, Sergeant Jordan Dixon, and Lieutenant Jeremy Reviss. They allowed me the opportunity last month to job shadow them. And all the proactive policing that that unit does, until you walk a day or sit a day in their cop car, you don't realize what they do to protect each and every one of us. And I just want to personally thank them for allowing me that opportunity to see what they're doing for our community. The other personnel update, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Montana Brown. If he'll please come forward. I would like to introduce you all to Chase Lemmons, who is Reesville's new Business Development Manager as of October 14th. So Mr. Brown, I'll turn it over to you and Mr. Lemmons.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Madam Manager. It is a pleasure as always to see you guys this evening. As Summer mentioned, we had Mr. Chase Lemon start with us on October 14th. So this position was created when my department went through some reorganization. I believe those discussed at your last council retreat back in December, February, excuse me. Thank you for the correction. So this position really is meant to work as a concierge service to help small businesses essentially find real estate, get through local permitting processes, registrations, things of that nature, as well as they're also going to be, Mr. Lemmons is going to be working to create a real estate database that we can show to clients as well. We went through a pretty rigorous interview process, review process. We actually posted the position two times, and I am 100% confident that we made the right hire here with Mr. Lemmons. He is a Rockingham County native. He was born and raised here. He has previous work experience as a grand administrator for North Carolina A&amp;T University, as well as for our neighbors in the City of Eden. Chase, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, absolutely. Mayor, Council, City Manager, thank you all for having me. Thank you for the introduction, Montana. I've met some of you. So nice to see you again. Those I haven't, I look forward to meeting you. I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Just a couple more announcements. I do want to make the announcement, our downtown inventory project, the downtown inventory project was distributed to city council on Monday, November the 4th. City council will need to determine if they would like a special call meeting. And I believe we're looking at a special call meeting to go over this project on November the 25th. I know more to come on that. Angela's working on a public notice. Just a couple more updates. Leaf season started on November 4th, and it will go through January the 10th. Please ensure that leaf piles are placed behind the curb line to minimize clogging of storm drains. It's important that leaf piles are free of other foreign materials such as limbs and trash, as these can clog our machines and slow progress. Also allow plenty of room between the leaf piles and on the street vehicles to assist with maneuvering our leaf collection equipment. Leaves collected and mulched by lawnmower or similar equipment should be bagged and collected by our sanitation department. Our leaf crews follow their route schedules to the best of their ability. So thank you all for offering this service. And then two more items of note. On Wednesday, October the 16th, I attended the Citizens for Economic Development Annual Meeting. This year, it was Rockingham, it was at Rockingham Community College, the Center for Workforce Development. Both these stats were interesting. Total visitor spending in 2223 in Rockingham County was $93 million. And in 2023, Rockingham County collected $373,210 in occupancy tax. So I think that speaks volumes to what the improvements at Lake Reesville can hold for us with our tourism. So thank you for that. And Mayor Gorman and Council, that completes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Councilmember reports are next. Mayor Proten.
Mayor, I've only got a few things to report this month. On October the 10th, I attended the computer training session at city hall with the IT department. Also, on October the 12th, attended the downtown senior citizens banquet at Covington Church, which was a lot of fun. On the 22nd of October, I attended the UDO meeting at city hall. And on November the 4th, attended the two-on-two meetings at city hall with the mayor and city manager.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Dejeanay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I would like to report that I attended most of my meetings by Zoom for medical reasons. And I attended the city council meeting on October the 8th, the UDO meeting on October the 22nd, the chamber meeting on October the 30th. And I would like to thank the chamber for what the work they did this month. They had several events, and all of them, I mean, all of them went off well with no problems. And then I also attended the November 4th two-on-two Zoom meeting, meeting by Zoom. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And since the chamber was mentioned, we don't want to sleep on that tonight. Diane, would you like to give your report at this time?
Yes, sir.
I sometimes forget.
You're okay. It's a lot to remember. Good evening. Can't believe it's been another month. So happy to see all of you this evening. Since Ms. Farber mentioned, we had a very busy October, but I want to thank everyone who came out and supported all of said events, particularly joining us for our expo on the 24th. So thank you to those of you that were able to make it to lunch and make it to the event. I'll just say it again, though I said it before, but Emmy is a rock star. She was amazing. And we're super, super thankful for the partnership. So just really quickly, it's already that time of year. I cannot believe that it is. But Shop Small Saturday, we're really excited. We had a really small but mighty committee this year. And when we took a look around, we realized that we have a lot of bakeries and restaurants and all kinds of things that we've not had previously. So we are not doing complimentary breakfast because we want to put the dollars into the pockets of the small businesses. And so we will be featuring a menu that will tell people where they can get breakfast. But also, we are partnered with the Downtown Corporation to do canvas bags. So we're doing shopping bags. They're very cute. I encourage you to come by and see, but they just have the Team Reesville logo and the Chamber logo and the Downtown Corporation. And they just say, you know, shop small, support local. So very excited to be doing that. But we are organizing social media content and encouraging our merchants across the city and regionally to get involved in Shop Small Season, which officially kicked off November the 1st. So there's going to be raffles and food and all kinds of fun stuff. There's even going to be vendors in some of the buildings and businesses that don't have retail. So come out and see us that day from 10 to 3. Also, the Chilling with My Nomi's theme, we will start, kick off that day, a gnome hunt. And so there will be gnomes all over the downtown area, and folks can come. And I think it'll encourage feet on the street. There'll be prizes for that. And they can turn them in to the chamber or in the off hours to our Santa mailbox. So we're so excited to partner again with the city on that. Kicking off on Shop Small, kids can come by and write a letter to Santa, and it will be returned to them as long as they put the name and the address and turn it in by the deadline. So that will start on the 30th, and then about mid-December, we cut that off. So all the information will be there. We usually try to leave, if the weather forecast is good, we try to leave them outside so people can pick them up in the off hours as well. So if you know any little ones, encourage them to come by and do that. And during the Christmas tree lighting and Hometown Christmas, we will have Santa's workshop inside, and we'll be doing arts and crafts, and we will have the letters and all of that happening that night as well. Two ribbon cuttings coming up next week, Alcova on the 18th at noon, and then Realty One Group results on the 20th at noon. So really excited about both of those. And then our newest member is Wonderfully Made Handcraft Studio Boutique, which is again, right across from the chamber here in downtown. So I hope you'll go all and introduce yourself to her. If you have not, they are phenomenal. I love them to pieces. I think they're going to do really well. Next coffee is hosted by the county school system. It will be at the Spark Lab at the high school. That is on Thursday, December the 5th at 9:00 AM. If you've not had an opportunity to see the Spark Lab, this is a good one. And it's going to be really exciting. And then I don't have the date right off the top of my head, but to go ahead and say, the countywide coffee will be at RCC on the second Wednesday of January, because it coincides with Leadership Rockingham. I don't know the date. I don't have my calendar. But just put that on your, the second Wednesday at 8:00 AM at RCC. So I think that wraps us up for the rest of the year. Thank you all so much for your continued support and partnership. We really appreciate it. And we're thankful to be a part of Team Reesville.
Thank you for all you do.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Hairston.
Just one thing, I attended the October 10th computer training here at city hall. And just a shout out to our technology department, just doing a wonderful job. We certainly enjoy the screens and computers and just keeping us up to date and really in front, out front, leading the way. So we certainly appreciate all that you do. That's, that's my report.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilman Martin?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Councilwoman Teresa Scoble.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, but I do not have a report tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Coats.
Just have a couple of things. Was able to attend, walk around the Fab Festival. Talked to some of the vendors that were there for the first time. No complaints. It was perfect weather. A lot of, a lot of visitors that came. I think the only complaint, I take it back, the only complaint I think we had was bees this year. That they were just swarming the daggone trash cans.
There's quite a few out there.
It was a lot. But it was a, it was a nice festival and good turnout, good weather for it. Also, attended the UDO meeting, special call meeting that we had on 23rd, met with Summer and Councilman Martin and other city workers out the lake with the project we discussed tonight. And then also was present and attended the downtown Halloween event again this year. And it just seems like the Halloween event with the kids, it keeps getting bigger and bigger. I know they were lined up there at Gilmore Street, all the way up, waiting to cross the street and come up one side of the street and come down the other when they got up to the north end here. But I received some texts and some Facebook messages from folks that attended it. And they had called some family and friends in. Didn't live in the city, had a lot of visitors here, and just talked how wonderful it is and how safe it is for the kids to, to walk around. And I think we had quite a bit attend, you know, businesses stayed open and handed out candy. And I guess next year, I'm just going to have to buy a van full because it don't last long. I mean, there's thousands of, people don't realize, there's thousands of kids up here. So but it continues to get better, better each year. So and that's all I have.
And the seniors enjoy that candy also.
They do.
On 10/8, I attended the Powder Puff Football Game at Reesville High School. 10/9, I observed the traffic pattern that we had, the new traffic pattern that we have downtown. We have two traffic crossings, and we had received some complaints about those. So I wanted to see exactly what was going on. I sat at each one for 30 minutes, and everything went very well that day. I attended the ribbon cutting at the Impex Auto Sales on 10/11, 10/12, Downtown Senior Citizens Club 55th Anniversary at Covington Church. 10/15, the Ann Ruston Community Watch Meeting. 10/16, Cambridge Community Watch Meeting. 10/19, Downtown Fab Festival. 10/22, Angkor ribbon cutting at Wentworth. 10/22, special meeting of city council to discuss the UDO. 10/24, the Chamber Luncheon at the Penthouse. 10/25, Trick or Treat Downtown, where everybody had a good time. 10/26, La Boca Loca First Year Anniversary and Celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month. And I've got a list that's a little bit longer than most. So I'm just going to turn that in, Angela. I'll be reading for a while if I continue. So we'll just call it quits right then. I'll turn it in to you.
Mayor Gorman, Council, may I give two more updates that Councilmember Martin, we've just discussed?
Sure.
I didn't want to mention, there's a girls' night out downtown on November the 18th. I believe it's sponsored by Sassy Southern Draw and Crave from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. So I bought that one. And then also, if we could just remember in our prayers, the senior at Morehead High School, Mr. Trooper Wright, I believe he had an ATV accident. So if we could just keep him and his family in your prayers. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Announcement of board and commission appointments.
There were, there were two being considered today for the ABC Board. Carolyn Nimmens was reappointed. She had billed a partial term. And then for the Historic Preservation Commission, Cindy Dilday had reapplied for another term on the Reesville Historic Preservation Commission. Both were unanimously appointed.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Next item is a move to the first floor conference room for a closed session to discuss land acquisition pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A5. Do we have a motion to go in the closed session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We will not be returning to the council chambers tonight after closed session. I do appreciate all of you for coming out tonight. Thank you so very much.